Press the button and this red light over here goes on.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our school board colleagues and Dr. Duran. Nice to have you here. Everybody here, I always sort of introduce myself. I think, I don't, this is for the record, I guess. Anyway, I'm Board Chair Libby Garvey and I'm joined by Vice Chair Takas Karantones, members Matthew Feranti, Susan Cunningham, Maureen Coffey, and we're joined by our school board colleagues, David Pretty, Mary Cadera, Miranda Turner, and Bethany Zekra Sutton, as well as our superintendent, Mrs. Gooduran. Very nice to see you. And so we're gonna, it's a simple agenda, but we got sort of a lot to talk about. It's great to get together. For those who are watching, I want to just make sure that you know there are videos of these sessions. They're available on our website and www. Arlingtonba.us and you can search on budget information for this work session and all of the other ones. And so I think we'll just go ahead and dig in. I'm glad we've got water and a few little treats, so everybody settle back, get comfortable, and we'll have a good conversation. Mr. Schwartz, do you want to take it away?
Yes.
I should invite you to make some comments, too. It's not on my script, but I should.
Well, I just wanted to say hello and I'm actually the interim chair right now because our chair, Christina, is out until June. So we, the nine of us together instead of 10 this time.
That is true, and we wish Christina all the best because soon she's going to have another little friend with her.
Yes, correct.
Which is very exciting. I apologize for not getting over and asking you to make some remarks.
Here's to future ABS students.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. All right, I think now, Mark, we're ready for you. Take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to everybody, especially to Dr. Duran, because we've, we spend a lot of time talking with each other and the opportunity for the two of us to lecture all of you while you sit here for two hours and don't ask any questions is really appreciated. Just kidding, of course. We're gonna, I'm gonna walk through some slides which will be an overview of what I presented to the county board with some updates about what they've advertised, and then I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague for his presentation, and we'll take it from there. So if we can share the slides. Okay. There we go. Okay, so let's go, let's go to the next slide here. So we include this slide in the front of our budget presentation every year, and we do it for a couple of reasons. One is obviously to let everybody know what the size of our budget is, but the split between the county operating and schools transfer is important for a couple of reasons. So if you look at this, 38% of our budget is going to schools, and we've had the opportunity, we had the pleasure this year of sitting down with all the school board members and county board members and going through a presentation of what our programs are, and schools did the same thing. We have hundreds of lines of business, but this is number one. It's our top priority as, as staff and as a board and as a community to have this amount of money going to our schools. It's important. We focus on that, and here you see $627 million is the amount that I proposed in the budget this year out of the 1.62 billion, and you can see that's in the increase. And I know Dr. Duran's gonna get into all the details on that. So let's go to the next slide. We have, in our budget is about a little bit over 4.5% increase, and if you look carefully there, you'll see it says real estate-based tax rate is proposed to change from 1.03 to 1.028. That is in my proposed budget. That accounted for the fact that we were eliminating the stormwater tax rate, but I also had proposed a penny and a half tax rate increase. The county board had advertised at a one cent above that, so that's the 1.038 you see in the advertised rate. The, we have a later slide that talks about what this means for the overall burden for residents and who own homes, who are renters. The column that you should really look at and spend some time on is the tax revenue growth column. As you know, under our revenue sharing agreement, we share all tax revenue with schools, and you can see that real estate, overall, the growth is 2.5%. That's a mix of some real, I think, for, it even for me, some surprising strength in the residential market. And the commercial market is a blend of all our multifamily residential, our multi, our commercial spaces, and that is where we've seen some challenges with office vacancy rates at about 22% and commercial valuation dropping about 11% in currently occupied spaces, offset a little bit by some new construction. Our other tax sources, which are business, professional, and occupational license, personal property, sales, meals, and hotel taxes are all doing quite well. And a little bit of a process piece here, we will be coming back to the county board probably at the end of this month or the first week of April with an update on how we're doing so far in fiscal '24. And, because the revenue numbers we relied on our budget were from January, we're doing a little bit better, so there will be some additional revenue. We'll talk about that. We'll end up being shared with schools. I can't give you a total on that, but that is traditionally something that happens, and it also informs what we included in our estimates in the fiscal '25 budget. If we're doing better, which we are, on some of these other taxes, that is also something that we'll discuss and become part of the budget calculations. So let's go to the next slide. I know Dr. Duran's, and you're familiar with the cuts that were made for schools. For us, I brought in a budget that was balanced without a tax rate increase, and in order to do that, early on, we'd been talking about somewhere between 20 and $40 million gap between revenues and expenses with the increased revenue and real estate assessments and growth in other taxes and looking at vacancy savings. We were able to balance the budget by cutting a little bit over $10 million in programs and services. Those were cuts that were taken to a combination of vacant positions and filled positions, and they are reduction of efforts in various departments in, in the government. And we've had a series of work sessions with our board. I know you have the same thing on your side, where we're going through each of the cuts, and I like, I always like to say that there is no program in the county without a constituency that thinks that you should never cut it, and that's okay. We're used to having those conversations, but my guidance from the board was to deliver them a budget that was balanced. Let's go to the next slide. We have, we've had this conversation with the county board and the community. When we were in the midst of COVID, we were recipient of a lot of one-time funds from the federal government, as was schools, ARPA funding, and the, the charge we've had from our board is that over the course of the last four fiscal years, we knew that money was going to start to go away, so we have been very intentional about taking that one-time funding that had been used for ongoing programs and cutting that back over a period of time. You can see in fiscal '25, we're now down to 3 million, and we're getting, where next year we'll be at 0 million. And it's not only because we knew the money was going away. This is a question we get all the time from our rating agencies when we meet with them. Are you using ongoing funding to meet your ongoing costs? So this is just a snapshot of what we've been doing for the last four or five years on that. Now, as I mentioned on the next slide, we'll talk about some of the proposals that were included in the 1.5% tax rate increase I proposed. I'm not gonna read each of the boxes to you, but you can see that Arlington Public Schools has the largest number here is 6.4 million, and then other priorities from housing, eviction prevention, human services, and environment. What had happened, especially over the pandemic with, and the increase in the need for housing grants and eviction prevention in our community, we were using some one-time funds to patch through those higher demands. And so what I've done here is propose a tax rate increase to meet those needs, and we are happy to get into a lot more details on this. You'll hear, hear a little bit more about the youth and teen programming in a few minutes, but eviction prevention, housing, and also a proposal for the environment, which is to increase Climate Action Fund along with the other work that we do. Next slide. We had talked, I talked a little bit about some of the service efficiencies. I'm not gonna read each of these to you, but let you know that we traditionally take a look at our art bus system to see which routes are not performing well, and we've proposed reductions there. We have a number of programs that we feel like the cuts can be sustained without reducing services, or they can be done in a different way. Happy to answer any questions on that, but rather than retreading the ground we've covered in all our work sessions, some of these programs are programs that have been here for a while. I'll give you one example where if we're shifting the dental program, that doesn't mean we're not gonna be providing services to our community. It's just a better way to do it. The dentist who's been doing it for a long time is retiring, and we have another organization that can step up and do it without the need of county staff and do it at a, a lower cost. We're always looking for opportunities to do that. Let's go to the next slide. And I know Dr. Duran's gonna talk a lot about, and you, in your work sessions, have talked a lot about making sure you support teachers and the administrators and all the bus drivers and everybody who works for the schools. We have the same situation, and I can say with 100% conviction, our board and hopefully most of our community understand that things don't get done without our staff. So we have here, we've had, I like to call it the joy of collective bargaining. We have three recognized collective bargaining units. We have three agreements in place, one with our fire, one with our police, and another with our service labor trade workers, and so that the wage rates there are guided by those agreements. We are providing, providing a 4.75% increase for our other employees, and we're also gonna be talking a little bit about, we have our work session week after next, about a proposal I have beginning in 2025 for a new retirement plan for new hires, because we're finding it's a little bit difficult to do recruiting right now in the market. Some of the people who are entering the market are not so focused on what they're gonna make 30 years from now. They'd like to have a little bit more portability in their retirement benefit, a little bit more money in their pocket upfront, so we'll be talking about that. We continue with job family studies, and health insurance premiums are going up 7%, which is a little bit unusual. Over the last three or four years, they've been steady, so that is something that we share about 80, 80% of the cost, 78% of the cost with the county kicks in and employees kick in the rest. Next, we have one slide on this right now, and I know this has been a subject of a lot of conversation, and Dr. Duran and, and I, and especially our staff have been working really closely on the kinds of investments we're gonna be making for teens and after-school programs. You can see here that the board appropriated $750,000 of one-time money last fiscal year, and in this budget, I had proposed $700,000 of ongoing and $500,000 of one-time. We're continuing to have those conversations as we go through that. We've received questions from our board and a lot of conversations with voice and ASHBA and NAACP. We were very intentional, and you'll hear more about this, about focusing our programs on those, those kids who are either at risk or in the state right now where they're having addiction issues, and making sure that we're focused on trying to address those needs and also, to a certain extent, the prevention that we can have. We have found that it's very difficult to find those providers in the community that we really need to step in and do that. That's been one of our challenges, but we have a lot of creative solutions I think we've come up with. I'm not gonna say that we're, we're there yet at all. We have a lot more work to do and a lot more conversation to have. Let's go on to the next one. Housing. So this is something that, you know, I, I will be the first to say, we can never spend enough on housing, given the challenges that we face in our community on allowing affordability and making sure that we have a mix of incomes in our community. We have, we're one of the few jurisdictions, I think anywhere in the country, but, and certainly nearby, where we have a housing grant program that is important to us and allows a lot of those people who move into our committed affordable units to afford the rents there. That cost of that program is, as you can see, $15 million. And then you can also see that we have made a really, really concerted effort, because this board agreed in 2021 to put in about, well, it was $150 million to the Barcroft deal, which was to purchase, help and Jirel Lynch purchase those apartments in Arlington County that were one of our last huge remaining affordable apartment stock. And we, when we did it in 2021, interest rates were really low. We assumed that the debt service on that was gonna be manageable, though we did say there's the possibility that bad things could happen, and they, and all the bad things happened. So we have, taking the opportunity with an infusion of one-time money here to try to buy down that debt so we can allow ourselves more flexibility in the future. That was my proposal here is to another $15 million and buy down of that debt, and that will make it, if the board agrees with that, that would make it a $30 million total buy down in the last year to try to bring that debt down. We have our Affordable Housing Investment Program. I talked a little bit about eviction prevention, permanent supportive housing, which focuses on those people in our community who really need a lot of wraparound services to make sure that they can live in our community, and then we receive a lot of funds from the federal government under the Housing Choice voucher program. Next slide. On the environment, I'm not gonna read each of these to you. I will just tell you that we spent a lot of time this year, we're, I'm proposing some money that will actually increase the funding we spend on our, how we take care of our trees, which is incredibly important. We continue to move to electrifying our fleet, and we are actually working with the schools on, we know we have, our, our bus fleet is becoming electrified. We have a study going on now, right now about the Trade Center and what it would take for electrification down there so that as school, the school bus fleet moves in that direction. A lot of things going on here, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not gonna read each of them to you, but just to let you know that this is top of mind for us, and I know schools are doing a lot of work in this area, too. Next slide. This is something where I, we were actually having meetings on this week, and I said, I love working on the CIP, but it makes it really hard for me to describe to everybody. We actually, when we talk about our pay-go budget, it gets really confusing in the even-numbered years, because we're doing pay-go and we're doing capital, and so a lot of the things you see up here, which I've included in our proposed budget, they are capital expenditures. They also relate to things that we'll end up talking about in our CIP when I'm coming forward, and I know you're working on it, too, in May, but we're doing a lot of investments, and you can see in each of these areas, again, I won't belabor all of them, but let, to let you know that we have, close to, I'm gonna get the number of facilities wrong. It's about 80 facilities, and we have a whole bunch of other spaces. We have incredible demands for technology, for public safety. We are investing in our parks. We have an energy management program that I referenced. These are fairly considerable investments, and another capital investment which we enjoy doing is working with the schools in our fields, and you can see some of that is referenced on the next slide. This is my favorite slide, the next one. So you can go ooh and ah about it. Okay? Isn't that cool? That is a number two Dixon Tyconderoga pencil, and...
Thank you, thank you.
These, these are, these are, we tried to sum up here. We don't, and I think the number is close to 11 or 12 million dollars. These are things that we do not transfer to you by dollars, but these are programs on the county side of the ledger that we're happy to do, where we're assisting schools. And you look at each and every one of those, they are things that if we did not do, the burden would fall upon the school board and the superintendent to figure out how to get them done. We happily do this. There's a long tradition here about why we do them. There's some efficiencies come with the fact that we do them as opposed to having separate programs, but you can, you know, your school nurses and health program and all the work that we do assisting with your fleet management and joint-use facilities. I know the school board is very familiar with that, but we'd like to remind the community sometimes when they say you need to do more for schools, we like to pull out our pencil and show it. Last few slides, looking forward. We have some of the challenges we have. This year, I was able to propose a budget that's in balance and happy to do that, but the demands for human services in our community continue to grow. Housing is an ever-present challenge. Recruitment and retention, we have some of the same challenges you're facing. We're in the same market with our municipal partners. I know when you're trying to hire a teacher, you are in competition with every surrounding jurisdiction. When we're trying to hire a police officer or a firefighter or a behavioral health worker, it's, you know, we are all, we smile when we're sitting with our colleagues from Prince William and Loudon and Alexandria and Fairfax, but we're in a fierce competition with them. So we face those challenges, too. Metro, we have, I think, perhaps averted the hard conversation for a year. It's still on the horizon, two years from now. So, and Libby, Libby's happy that we were able to skip it this year, but we have, there's, there is not a consistent ongoing source of funding for Metro. We've been able, I think, with additional funding, hopefully from the Commonwealth and from Maryland and the district, and relying on some balances we have, we'll be able to make it through. You know, you can see each of the boxes here that represent a challenge. I wanted to let you know, libraries, we're doing, we're kicking off in a couple, in like a week and a half, a study on the future of libraries in the county. We have, we talked about this the other day here. We're planning over the next five years for another fire station on the west end of Columbia Pike. You know about the Long Bridge Aquatics and Fitness Facility, which you probably don't know is we are relying to a certain extent on funding we receive from Boeing to offset the operating costs. That money's gonna go away in about a year and a half from now, so that'll be a pressure. We have the housing demand I talked about. Office market, we're spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to solve that riddle, but as we continue, as leases roll off and office vacancies probably increase, that's going to affect our real estate tax revenue, and the other two, retaining a workforce and human service needs we've talked about. Just a snapshot on the next slide about what we're doing. This is an update for the county board, too. You can see the proposed Arlington tax rate and where the board advertised, and last week Alexandria came out. They're proposing a four-cent increase. You can see that Fairfax also proposed an increase. I don't know exactly, I think that advertised a number, I don't think they've advertised yet, but they will be. And then Loudon, you know, I love Tim Hemm Street, my colleague in Loudon. I told him that I wish that I had data centers because they don't have kids that go to school and they don't call the fire department and they don't have human service needs, and he has a lot of data centers out there, and that allows them to do what they do there, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm not jealous, but I guess I am. I just lied. I'm jealous. Let's go to the next slide. This is, just to wrap up, you know, we talk a little bit about, you know, the impacts of what we do in programming, but the, sometimes, I know we do on the county board side. I imagine on the school board, perhaps you hear from residents, but they're, they're focused a little bit on what this means for the tax burden to them. So you can see, we have the proposed budget. You can see the change in the tax bill, not just the residential tax, real estate tax, but we, the mythical property owner, you know, average person who has some cars and, and pays for water and utilities. You can see that the change we're proposing would increase the bill by $500, and then if you go to a 2.5 cent tax rate increase, that makes it a $582 increase. And then on the bottom line, still a work in progress, but it turns out there are people in this community who rent. I mean, shocking. Who knew? And we're trying to come up with a metric that assesses how the impact essentially gets passed on from the landlords to the renters in the, in the community with, with our various tax proposals. So next slide, I think we all know about. It's sort of, we, we didn't do a you are here, but we're actually towards the end of March finishing up our work sessions. We have a couple coming up. We have a public hearing coming up, and then the dates you see there, the county board will be acting towards the last part of April, and I know the school board acts in May. So with that, I will stop and turn it back to the chair.
All right, thank you. Well, probably my colleagues could ask questions of our manager about the budget. Well, probably my colleagues could ask questions of our manager about the budget. We have a lot of work sessions, we're doing that in, so I would like to offer you the opportunity, if you've got any questions or anything. And David, I'll kind of just turn it over to you to recognize your colleagues and handle the meeting at this moment, if you would.
Yeah. Would, would anyone like to start with questions, colleagues?
Thank you. It was helpful for me in our two-by-twos at the end of January and into February to talk about the transfer, the one-time transfer that happens every year from the county to the schools. And I think for our colleagues who might be listening in on this Friday afternoon in the public, can you walk us through, Mr. Schwartz, a little bit about the one-time funds that come from the county to the schools every year? And they're variable, they change from year to year. Can you just explain for folks who might be listening in, why they vary from year to year, and why we have an ongoing and a one-time? A little bit of context there.
Yeah, I will start, and then I'm going to ask if, if Richard wants to step in. One piece of it is a function of what happens with, this is going to sound a little bit arcane, but we, actually, in every fiscal year, we get three tax payments. And so when the county board takes an action, they'll take an action in April, that will affect the June bill, which then rolls into the next fiscal year. As far as the variability, I'm going to let Richard step in and give you some examples about why that's happened.
So when we go through the closeout process in the fall of the prior fiscal year, the one-time funds are, that come to the schools are, are twofold. One, the expenditure savings that the schools had that we didn't transfer, and, you know, based on the principles of revenue sharing. And then tax revenue that has come in at the conclusion of the fiscal year that we didn't anticipate when we did the reestimates in the spring. So there's always, hopefully, a little bit extra, not something negative, that is, again, shared with schools through closeout. When we are proposing the budget now, we don't do it every year, but the manager mentioned that, you know, assessments changed in January, and we've made an assumption in the current fiscal year of what, what that assessment change would be. And this year it was slightly higher, so more one-time revenues generated from that third, this June payment that we will receive, that we know will fall out in this fiscal year. And we also reestimated, in this year's case, another tax that actually doesn't, we don't receive until March, and we saw that it was already coming up, increasing over the current years. And so when the manager proposed the budget, we also included that additional revenue that we know will realize in this fiscal year. So there are different points in the time that we're reevaluating, and as we make those adjustments, sometimes they generate one-time money over the, you know, because they're in addition to what we've estimated for the current fiscal year.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Ms. Eckerstetter?
When the red light goes on, you're a good one. Yeah, see the red light? Yeah, I know it's odd, red means it's on.
Thank you. I actually wanted to ask a sort of forward-looking question. Several times, our Budget Advisory Committee, which is a citizen advisory committee, has talked about the demographic shift in, in Arlington's population. Perhaps the population at the more mature stages of life is going to increase. And I am curious whether there are things that you anticipate needing to invest in or wanting to invest in as Arlington's demographics seem to be heading towards a shift.
So I'm going to pull out a phrase that hasn't been used for a few years, the silver tsunami.
Yeah, here I am.
So, yeah, no, we, you know, that, that is affecting a lot of our approaches to our human service programs and service delivery there. And as a matter of fact, I think that our, some of our, our housing, if we go through making our housing choices, we're building a lot of committed affordable units. I don't know if we're exactly ready for some of the challenges we're going to face as people age in the community and want to stay in place. So that is something that's on the horizon. You are correct about the demographics changing. We've had a lot of work, our demographers work closely with your staff. And I know schools are very much focused on, you know, what's the birth rate in all those cohorts? But as the population ages in our community, we are finding that we have a larger percentage of our community will be 55 and over as we proceed over the next several decades. So that is going to require us to change the way we have some of our, use our facilities and deliver our services. So it is, I say it's not quite top of mind, but it's one of the issues we're spending a lot of time on. And I think that, you know, schools will be, you know, you have programs that address learning later in life, but that's also something that's a part of the solution, too.
If I could just add, I mean, I think it's something, I think every year it's going to be more and more of an issue, and we heard about it a little bit with our session with our public safety yesterday. As with everything else, homelessness, more and more people who are homeless are older, and they present all kinds of problems. They can't really go into a shelter, you know. So there are all kinds of needs that just kind of are exacerbated by age, and that's, and there's going to be more and more older folks for quite a while. So it's a good question, and something we actually are thinking about more and more. Our Commission on Aging, I'll just say I'm the liaison, I've been impressed about, all of a sudden, there are a lot of people interested in being on the commission and coming to us, and some of them are younger, and some of them are older, but they're all into it, and they're thinking a lot, which is great. So I think our, you know, our community is starting to kind of think about it and prepare for it. I think there are going to be some surprises, we're not going to know exactly what to expect, but it's definitely going to affect things. So thanks for asking.
I would assume that ties into the library study as well. I guess part of what, what the
Libraries and, yes, and the programs that we offer.
Normally, every time I've talked to you, we've talked about metro and, and commercial vacancy rates. So we've already addressed those today, so we're good there. But, you have one more? Great.
Yeah, when I've had conversations with you, Chair Garvey, we have talked about resiliency in the community. We've talked about energy resiliency, we've talked about climate resiliency, and the ways that that might affect emergency response, stormwater, many things. And so I think about, when you went through very helpfully the pressures that you're thinking about on the county budget, I imagine that that impacts, in the areas of energy and climate, I imagine that impacts capital budgets, but also operating budget as well. Correct?
Correct.
And is that, when you think about those things, are you thinking about that as a near-term, next two to three years? Or are you thinking about those things as longer term? Or perhaps both?
I would say both, and I'll invite the manager to talk about it. I think we've got near terms, what we can do, and looking long-term. And climate change is happening faster and faster. We were all startled by that 2019 storm, and cars floating down there. I mean, I see pictures about that, but it's never in Arlington, cars floating down a road. So there's more of that. And of course, we're, you know, I think all of us are starting to think more and more about the fall and political unrest and some things that that might bring about. So I think I'll turn it over to Mark, see if there's anything he wants to add. We've got a lot of things that we're talking about and thinking about, we're not quite ready to present them, I don't think. But Mark, why don't you?
Yes, so, you know, we, I think we have a ways to go, though we've started on that, on making sure that, and I'm not going to sit here and say we have it figured out. And as, as a matter of fact, our chair and vice chair participated in an exercise with the Council of Governments last week. We, our, our power grid, and everyone's talking about electrifying, and, you know, I think you read the article, and probably saw the article in The Post last week about the insatiable demand for electricity. And that relies on, you know, a single utility to provide that. And so that is a real challenge for us as a community. We need to be thinking of not only becoming carbon neutral, but also figuring out how we can come, become fully sufficient. So we've started on that. I feel like we, we're just at the beginning of that. We have a long way to go. And so that also focuses on, we had a presentation on Tuesday by our public safety staff. And if you looked at the graphic they put up and compare that graphic with five years ago, five years ago, before COVID, obviously, they should have figured out that was going to happen, and they didn't, they missed that, they blew it big time. But they, we had, we had, we had, I think they use it was heat resilient, or, or heat resiliency, because we found last summer and the summer before, obviously, climate change is happening, but for us, what that means is how we do our operations, how our staff can go out there and actually do the work when the weather is so hot. And not only that, how are people going to make, make themselves, make it, make it habitable in our community, which has a heat island? And those are things that we're just beginning to address. And we have a long way to go on that, it's top of mind for us. But we are, again, as you saw with the stormwater issues, trying to undo some of the really brilliant ideas of the previous generations, and figure out how to retrofit our community as we continue to live. And I, I think that that is also a challenge that the schools face, and each of our homeowners face, and I'll stop right there.
Yeah. And then if we, so I think when we get the CIP, we'll probably talk, because we're just starting to look at, you know, need to consider, do we use our community facilities as cooling centers if the power's out and people need to cool down? Or heating centers or whatever? And if the power's out, how are we, how are we making those function? Is there enough diesel fuel to go around? So I suspect we'll probably talk about that more during the CIP as well, because our schools are natural shelters for people, I think. Good question, thank you for asking.
Just, just an addition to that. So we very, you know, resiliency has two, two phases. One is preparedness to respond, and the other is ability to prevent. So to make, they make the community less vulnerable. A, a big location for that, budget focus for that is in the CIP, what we build, how we build, what we do, deal with stormwater, et cetera. This is, you know, the latter, ability to prevent. But daily, the operations budget will, is, is already impacted a lot. I mean, look at the stormwater utility that we created, and you've seen that here in the slides. So this is, this is already here. There is no question about that. So thinking ahead, we always recognize that, that schools, for example, have, are the location of some of the most vulnerable populations, and also one of the most vulnerable operations, right? So we have just started to evaluate that.
And I'm going to just leave it, and when you're all done with questions, you can continue to run the meeting and go turn it over to your superintendent, if you'd like, Mr. Pretty.
Thank you. Do we, colleagues, have any more questions? Are we good?
All right. Well, as, as Mr. Schwartz mentioned, as Ms. Kader mentioned earlier, we did two-by-twos with, with the county board and with the, the school board, and to find out about each other's budgets. And it was very enlightening. It's, it's, I think it's something we should do every year and keep, keep that going. So if that was, if that was your idea, Chair Garvey, if that was Christina's, Diaz Torres' idea, then
I just think it was a whole kinds of group idea.
Whoever wants to take credit for it, that was a pretty, pretty solid move. There you go. It's mad. Because there's been a lot of questions about our budgets and how we come up with them, and, you know, the county uses one-time funds differently than we do, and, and it was enlightening to, to have that conversation about it. So in order to be as transparent as possible and to follow up on those two-by-twos, we have binders for, for you all in front of you, so you can follow along. We also posted them online, too. So if you're, if you're listening at home, you can have all the information there. And with that information, you should be able to, it might be a little light reading for you, but it's, it's actually what the components of our budget make, and which is what Dr. Duran is going to go into. So without further ado.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Pretty, and thank you, everyone, for having me here. It's a pleasure to be here, also next to you, Mark. We spend a lot of time on teams together, so it's always nice to be in person with you. Next slide, this is an overview of each year as the budget has developed. School board provides direction to me on how to develop the budget. This year, the budget had some main areas to focus on for our three key priorities about deepening our focus on student well-being and academic progress as the number one. Thinking about priority two, how we invest in our workforce and making sure we're competitive and remain competitive in the region. And then three, how we begin to think about our operational efficiencies. In addition, we knew this year going in that we were going to be limited in terms of our ability to provide new funding requests, so the board directed me to limit any new funding requests to those that are very, very essential. And in fact, what you'll see in this year's budget is that we really have very little to know new requests. It was really about maintaining and sustaining some of the work that we've done previously. The number one driving new funding in this proposed budget is the compensation. And then also, we've begun simultaneously, it's not reflected in this budget, but we have begun a process to undertake a study of our planning factors. Our planning factors are those indicators that determine the number of staff for students with disabilities, English learners, counselors, social workers, et cetera, how they are allocated to schools. In many cases, you may not be aware that Arlington Public Schools has not revised their planning factors since the 1980s, some in the 90s, and some in 2000. And so that's quite a time difference to think about how services were provided, particularly to our students with disabilities, and how planning factors were set up at a time where we know now a better way to educate them. Next slide shows an overview of the total budget, is 826 million, so you can see a very slight increase of our expenditure, 1.7% over last year. I also want to make sure that our public knows, I know our county board members know this, that the proposed budget is based upon the governor's proposed budget. And so that is why we do see in our governor's proposed budget, a decrease of 5% of funding coming to us, which is a big concern. And so some of the ways that we were able to look at what, what we put forward, and why at this time, you will see at the very end, we still have a gap, is because we are uncertain about what the state funding will be. The next couple of slides will show you some of the highlights of what are those areas that we're sustaining and maintaining. So on the next slide, you'll see priority one. Here are some of the areas that are really, really critical for us. Obviously, our student well-being and academic progress is number one. We do look at projected enrollment increases, and we did just do an update to our spring projected enrollment. And so we do have an investment here of 43 new FTE positions for schools. That is an increase that you see. The maintaining for special populations, the supports that we provide for our English learners, students with disabilities, all the work that we've done around socio-emotional learning, and the work that we're doing to continue to enhance our instructional resources are all indicated there. But again, for the most part, with the exception of the increase for projected enrollment, the others are maintaining the investments we currently have. And the next slide is priority two relating to our staff. We are in the proposed budget, I will say first and foremost, that being this an extremely challenging budget year, we need to do more to remain competitive. What I have proposed here is a 3.3% average increase for our employees, as it correlates to what the funding is coming from the general assembly just passed on March 9th, a budget that accounts for 3% increase. So this is in alignment with that. However, what we all have learned, and what I hope our community learns more about, is the way that funding comes to us from the general assembly and from VDOE. When you say a 3% increase, you would think we would be getting money for a 3% increase. In fact, what it means, because of the forming funding that comes, that's based on our standard of quality positions only get funded, number one. And number two, we only get 20% of the funding for those standard of quality positions. What that equates to is, a 3% increase costs us $17.1 million, but we receive $1.1 million for that, which means that we must make up through general operating funds, local dollars, 16 million of the 17 million. So when the governor and the general assembly announced that Arlington Public Schools has receiving funding for 3% increase, we're receiving $1 million, which costs us 17. On the next slide, you'll see why it's so important, though, despite the fact that we're not receiving sufficient funds, why we must continue to invest in compensation. It does have implication to retention of our employees. Our employee retention rate is 89%, which is a 5% increase from what we saw during the pandemic, and almost back up to the 90% that was pre-pandemic. Compensation is certainly not the only thing that we need to do. There are other things to support our teachers, but it is one key driver. The next slide is just an overview of the compensation history that you've seen in the last four years where I've presented budgets. We have seen an increase of 21.5% for our employees, and that was very important because we did a compensation study that showed that we were in the bottom of our competitiveness for the region. And so we needed to invest, and previous boards working with me, we did invest greatly in realigning our salary scales to make sure that we were competitive. Prior to the pandemic, and in previous years, there were four years where there was no compensation increases provided due to balancing the budget. So this year, it would be an easy thing to do with the gap that we have, to just simply say we would do the same and balance the budget. But I do not believe, and our board has directed me, and together, we believe that investing in our employees is first and foremost. And I remain committed to always doing that in any budget we bring forward. But again, it is not simply enough, the 3%. We need to do more, because you'll see on the next few slides, the next one, this is our current comparison. And we chose this snapshot only because 78% of our teachers are on the master's degree scale. And so because of that, we showed you a snapshot of our master's degree scale here. And if you look at Arlington County, which is in alphabetical order compared to our surrounding jurisdictions, currently, we are number one for Step 1, number two for Step 5, number two for Step 10, and number two for Step 15 in the region. And that is because what we did a couple of years ago to invest by using some of our funding to get us back into this place. Well, the next slide shows a different story, because what we're Well, the next slide shows a different story because what we're seeing now, and these are all proposals, because just like we're doing now, all of our surrounding jurisdictions are speaking with their local county boards, city councils, et cetera. And they have proposed, what you see in parentheses there, for cost of living adjustments to their compensation for their employees. If they go through with their percentages and ours comes through, you will see that we will fall in our rankings once again. And so this is a real challenge and a concern for us that we have to continue to think about ways that we're going to invest and support our employees. So we took three steps forward, and, you know, unfortunately, with this budget, taking a few steps back, and we've got to continue to keep this as the eye on the prize in terms of what it is all about to support our employees. The next slide is our priority three, operational efficiency. Again, you will see here that all of the items here are really, for the most part, investing to sustain and maintain the work we're doing. I won't read all of these to you, but one point, you know, the collaboration with the county, the replacing the synthetic, synthetic turf, the continuation, working with the county on our school bus replacements. And then the others are just very important things to maintain our facilities and our leases, et cetera, on this slide. Knowing the fact that we had to maintain and sustain those basic functions of our school system, the operational functions, the instructional functions, and supporting the well-being of our students, and not balancing the budget simply on the fact of our staff saying they would not receive any compensation, we knew that we had to look at the fact that based on the governor's proposal and what we knew of the county transfer coming to us, we would have a very great deficit, shortfall. So the next slide to address that shortfall, at this point, we have reduced our central office positions, and we have reduced our school positions very limited at this point. At this point, our central office positions is that we are looking at taking about 23 FTEs, and we are continuing a process of any vacancies that come about in central office, evaluating them case by case to determine whether or not we can, we need to fill them or we can find other efficiencies. And since my initial proposal to the Board in February 29th, we have had three, four vacancies come up, and three of which we have now removed from the, the budget and added additional savings, and we'll continue that practice. We really wanted to try to alleviate as much of the cuts away from our schools. And so the only school reductions that are currently in the proposal are two. One, we look at our discretionary budgets that schools have, and we looked at the amount of money that they had pretty much left over from year to year, and took a small percentage of that, 2%, which really only amounts to $142,000 across all 42 schools. So you know, that's, you can see that's a very small amount. Then we did have a correction to a planning factor where schools previously received additional FTEs for their art, music, and PE due to things that had happened previously during the FLEX opportunities and Wednesday early release, and there were some additional FTEs that had not been taken, so we did remove those. But at this time, that's currently all that we see happening in our schools. On the next slide, you can see a little breakdown from our central office positions, some of what we are reducing, $20.6 million to close the gap, not just a reduction of 5% of positions. And again, that will be continued to be reviewed as we have vacancies. But we also have, are reducing by 17% our discretionary accounts in central office. We currently froze 20% of this year's budget to carry forward, the amount of $3.6 million. And we are reducing our MCMM, minor construction, major maintenance funds, as well as a few other things that you could see on, on the slide. The next slide shows a little bit more about how we're doing that in terms of we actually eliminated one of our departments, our planning and evaluation office, and have redistributed some of that work to various offices. And you can see here, I won't read this, but you can see the variety of offices and departments where we did have positions that were eliminated, actual positions, and then the very bottom, the vacant positions. And again, that may continue to grow as we see other vacancies come about. The next slide is an overview of what I was just talking about at the beginning in terms of the reduction to schools, the slight reduction to the 2% discretionary count, and the 19.8 FTE positions. That is a correction to the outdated planning factor, does not reduce the art or music or PE classroom instruction, though. On the next slide, as you move forward, you will see that I thought it was very important. We'd not done this before, but I think it's really critical. As we look at a recent study that was done by the J-Lark Commission that showed how Virginia public schools are really being underfunded. Each year that I have presented a proposed budget, and ultimately the one that was adopted, and each year I've come before this county board, we've provided to you what our requests are for spending. But we have not shared that there's a lot of unfunded needs that are occurring because what we presented to you are those decisions we made to balance the budget, not necessarily include in the budget. And so this year, I wanted to make sure our community was able to see there are many items that are not in this budget that are important. The next slide, you will see about $26.6 million that we need to have additional funding for. Looking at what the J-Lark study has shown, Arlington Public Schools is underfunded approximately $50 million if we were receiving the amount of funding based upon their study. Reducing our class size, hiring more interventionists to support students in math, providing more support for our secondary literacy. We've done a great amount of work in our elementary literacy. We've made shifts there. Providing support in our middle and high schools for deans, which are helping wrap around support services for students. Another very important one is our teachers and our schools are given funding to provide, to purchase materials and supplies. Those materials and supply dollar amounts have not been changed since 2014. So adjusting for inflation, the amount that was provided to them to help them purchase materials that are needed. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have a planning factor study going on. That's not currently in the proposal, but it will be coming out in June, a report that will help us recognize and understand what is the appropriate staffing we should be providing if we want to make sure that more students with disabilities are included in general ed classes, get the supports they need, if we want to make sure that our English learners are, have their needs met, not simply by just being an English learner, but recognizing in Arlington Public Schools, we're seeing more English learners coming to us without a formal education, without even proficiency in their native language. That produces a whole other set of resources and instructional needs that we have. And we know, we've talked a lot about this, Board, and I want to thank the county board and Mark Schwartz for your partnership around thinking about social, emotional needs, mental health and wellness. But we know that our counselors, our psychologists and social workers are part of that tier-one support, and we know that we need much, much more. As I've already stated, thinking about our employees, I believe if we had the money we needed from the General Assembly coming to us, I wouldn't be saying a 3.3%. I would be saying a 5.3% increase for our staff. That is what, the bare minimum that would help keep us, not dropping down to that lower level, as you saw in that one slide, and being competitive. We are now in this year in a competitive space. We're dropping because of that. And then thinking about our operational needs, you can, you know, we have a lot more to do around our facilities, and we'll be talking more about that to the CIP process. So on the next few slides, let me just give an update on where we are by the numbers. The General Assembly did on March 9th adjourn, and you can see that the governor's budget proposal, which mine is based on, cut APS by approximately $5 million. But the budget that was sent to him for now consideration funds us $7 million. The General Assembly did provide, as I indicated, money for a 3% increase, $1.1 million. They helped restore the hold, hold harmless provisions that the governor had cut. They restored our preschool funding that would have had us to cut it by half. They also expanded sales tax allocation and enhanced some funding for at-risk, and provided some additional supports for our English learner staffing, which meets the needs, as I was describing earlier, for those students who come to us with limited and formal education. So the positive news there is that the budget that's been sent to the governor, that is now in discussions with him and the General Assembly, provides us seven more million dollars where his cut us by $5 million. The next slide is just another overview. I've talked about this a couple of times, but the SOQ funding formula. I want to read this quote because I think it's important for everyone in the community to really understand this piece that came out of the J-Lark report. "Virginia school divisions receive less K-12 funding per student than the 50-state average, the regional average, and in fact, the three of our five bordering states. School divisions in other states receive 14% more per student than school divisions in Virginia on average, after normalizing even for differences of labor among states." So what that means, it equates to about $1,900 more per student that we should be receiving. And for us, that would mean approximately $50 million we would be receiving had that been in place, if that was in place. So I think that's important because what it tells us all as a, as a community, and certainly as a county board, that we have a structural deficit already in the funding that comes to us. Before we even address the needs, the challenges, the revenue coming in on the county side, we have a state deficit that's going to continue to be there unless changes are made. The promising news we saw out of the General Assembly was there were studies put in place, there were amendments that were passed and bills passed to look at how they would change the funding for Virginia public schools. But that's going to be a time to come, and it's something I hope that our community will pay attention to, advocate for, because again, that quote is very, very telling. I wanted to read it, put it up here, because it really, really should send all of our community a message to understand that we are not funded properly by the state, and that is what puts us in a situation of not being able to properly provide the support to our staff, instructional needs of our students, and the operational needs of our school system. The next slide is simply an update from the county revenue. You're very aware of this, that the total transfer, as Mr. Schwartz just showed in his presentation. The next slide shows an overview of our projected reserves that will be, after my proposal is adopted by the Board, we will have $25.3 million in reserves, with 75% of that being in our capital reserve account. We do do our reserves a little differently than the county, and so you can see we have a compensation reserve. That compensation reserve is funding that is put at the end of each fiscal year when we do our closeout. Any funds that is left over and laps and turnover from positions is at the closeout in December, put into our compensation reserve, and we use that every year towards any compensation adjustments. Any additional dollars beyond that is, are used in one of two ways beyond that, that the school board makes the final decision on. One, we look at any costs that are occurring in that year that we did not anticipate or that we did not see when the budget was passed, and we may have one-time purchases to do. For example, one year, we use those funds to purchase some materials for language arts at the elementary level. And then beyond that, what's left, then it is always set aside to future budget year reserves. So you can see that this year, though, we are using many of those to help us balance this. On the next slide, you can see an overview of since fiscal year 2017 through fiscal year '25, the very, very, very bottom column, you can see the use of one-time funding as a part of our budget. 2.3% was the lowest in fiscal year 2017. Our high years were during the pandemic. As, as Mr. Schwartz mentioned earlier, we did have a lot of ARPA funds and other funding that was used one time, so that was 6.2%. And then this year's budget is 2.8% of the proposal. The next slide is my revision to my proposed budget since I proposed to the community on the 29th. We have since then, at the very bottom, received additional funding from the county as an update. We also then received additional update on our projected enrollment, which required us to add an additional 22.9 positions. And then, as I mentioned, as we're evaluating more vacancies that come about, there was additional savings there. So currently, the revised gap is such, and again, I want to reiterate that the revenues coming in at the very top, and the $795 million includes the governor's proposed budget, so it does have the reduction in there. It does not include the $7 million from the state because that has not been signed. This is based solely on the governor's budget. And so the revised gap is currently $28.4 million. If you look on the next slide, you can see how would we address that. We do, we organized this into three columns based upon, one, what the county board advertised, the two and a half cent, what the, what county manager advertised, that one and a half cent, and some were in the middle. How would we get to a balance of zero? One thing that we have seen here, you can, we added in the $7 million, that's the most it's going to be. It might not be seven. There may be negotiations between the governor and the General Assembly that lower that. That's the highest it will be because that is what was passed by the General Assembly, but it certainly could be lower. But we're basing that $7 million there. And then based upon two and a half, two or 1.5, this would be the additional county transfer funds coming to us. So we would have a deficit to close the gap anywhere from 5.4 to 11.8 million. How would we continue to close that even further? We would take additional 5% reduction to discretionary accounts. We currently have 12%. This would take us up to 17%. We would have an additional reduction to some of our minor maintenance and major, minor construction, MCMM funding. And we are going to then do some changes to indirect costs that we can provide for our food and nutrition services. This is funding that, it's a, it's a self-funded fund, however, we can charge indirect costs for the administration of it that we had not done previously. If we do that, following those three columns, then we have either a balanced budget or a $6.4 million gap. At this point, we have really stayed as far away from schools as much as possible. As I said to you earlier, the only thing we've provided to school cuts is that 2% discretionary, $142,000, and the 19 positions that were related to the art, music, and PE planning factor adjustment. At this point, with a 0 to $6.4 million, there would need to be some adjustment to school reductions and school budgets. So on the next slide, you can see here what that would look like. What that would look like for schools is breaks it down by level. Obviously, in the two and a half cent column, that we'd, we'd have a balanced budget. In the two and the 1.5, you would see how we would break down the remaining gap. And at the very bottom below, you can see what that range would be for our schools. And the range would be our largest elementary school to our smallest, our largest middle to our smallest, largest high and other program. What that would mean is what the approach that we're going to take, instead of saying that we're going to just raise class size across the district, or cut counselors, or cut more, what we would instead do is work with each principal to determine what they would cut from their budget based upon the amount that would be needed. So you can see, for example, at an elementary school on the high end, that would be $80,000 that they would need to cut from their budget on the mid-two cents, or $170,000 on the low. At our high school, $500,000 at the low, $250,000. And we would sit with each principal to look at their discretionary funds, their positions, any vacancies they may have, and then come to a discussion on what, and a decision on what would be cut for those schools. And that would get us in all three cases to a balanced budget. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Pretty. Go back to the last slide, please, as Mr. Pretty closes out the presentation.
Yeah, so the, the last slide has the, the left column there with the, the high, the two and a half cents, which is one cent more than the, the county manager's proposal. So we're, we're requesting that you consider that for us, given what we've, what Dr. Duran has presented. And we know the, the state piece of it with the legislatures and the LCI and the, and the J-Lark stuff, we know that's down the road, but you know, we're living in the now right now for, for this year. So thank you for, for hearing us.
Thank you. And one question, just want to verify that. So when you're looking at the high and the low, you're assuming that we would do the revenue sharing split?
Yes, this is a revenue split. This is not coming, yeah, the exact split that we normally have.
We know you have competing factions.
Yeah, we do. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Colleagues, questions for school board, school board colleagues? Matt, your light is on. Talking, oh, oh, all lights are on. I'm going to go with Ms. Coffey first. Go ahead.
There's a term gunner in law school. I do not want to be that person.
You sounded surprised that all the lights came on.
I was, because I, I don't know, it seems the last work session, I was turning on the lights until I, like, tried to move on or something. Anyway, take it away.
Okay, so looking at compensation, I mean, I think we can all agree that dropping to sixth is not a good feeling. That is pretty, that's, that stood out to me, I have to say. So I guess kind of two stacked questions. What is the cost in dollars of each 1% COLA? And then how would, for example, an additional just 1% change our competitiveness in the region?
So it's additional 11.8 for two, so let me just divide that real quick. 5.9, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Burned in your brain.
Got some musical chairs here.
We had the same question.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
As far as the competitiveness with a 2%, it would actually still put us probably around step, excuse me, rank in us around number four in the area, if the other school systems actually do the proposals that they are proposing right now, their county boards, board supervisors, whatever they may call themselves. It's ranging anywhere from 3% up to over 8% for some of our school systems around us.
Could I add a question? And where, is that pulling out pay with COLAs? There's COLA and step increases.
Yes, in some cases, some of those school systems are doing a COLA as well as a step, and in some cases, they're doing just a margarita adjustment, which is a COLA.
Okay, so that, that we're comparing, because at one slide, you had 3.3%, and then it's 1. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little.
Sure. The 3.3% includes the average for all of our scales. So So it's a step. The step is approximately 2.3%, and then the, of course, 1% COLA that we are proposing.
Okay, and when we're comparing it to the school, their school divisions, that includes, they're also including, they're including everything. Okay, and the one, but the 1% doesn't, I'm so sorry.
Okay, so some of the school systems are proposing a step on top of the, say, for example.
Which is what you're proposing.
Right.
Right.
So in Alexandria, for example, they're looking at a 2%, I believe, as well as a step. So each school system, a step could be different. In Arlington, our steps are pretty much on a sliding scale, so at the beginning of the scale, it goes 3% for each step, and once you get to the middle of the scale, it goes to 2%, and when you get to the top of the scale, it's 1% between each step. Some school systems is flat, say 2.87% to a 3% between each step, and no variance between the steps.
So when you're comparing and saying it's the one, it's at 1%, which does look, it definitely makes you look, that's, why is it not the 3.3% that you had earlier? That's where, I'm so sorry, I know I shouldn't understand this, but.
So the 3.3% is based on the individual employees, what their salary will get, not how our salary scale compares to others' salary scales. The 1% changes our salary scale, because it's the COLA, but the 2.3% is what as an employee you would get more of. So you'd get 2.3% more because you move up on a step, and then you'd get a 1% adjustment on top of that. So when we compare our salary scale to another school system's salary scale, we have to compare how our scale has changed, not how much an employee has received more of in their yearly check.
I think I follow that.
I think Bethany had something.
I think if we did, if we have 1% COLA now, and you saw the numbers, if we had a 2% COLA, we would get a little further up, and if we were able to do a 3% COLA, we'd probably be back in the range of, in the top, in the top three. Like, we've always had the goal of being in the top three. We have been in the top three. It would take 3% for us to return.
The 3% COLA on top of the step. Just that we're all, yeah.
Which is why on my unfunded needs slide, on slide number 17, that's why I had there the 5.3%, because that would keep us relatively competitive in the top three.
Yeah. I'm going to pass along for now, but I may have.
So just for clarification, the comparison of falling to the sixth rank is based on the proposals of.
The proposals, all of the surrounding.
Of the school system equivalents.
Correct, not they're adopted, because no one else has an adopted one.
And as we know, our neighboring jurisdictions are already loudly struggling with this, as we do. So that's, just for my clarification, so the combined index, the average increase with 1% is 3.3, with 2% would be what, how much?
How much would 2%, the COLA?
Yeah.
2% COLA is $11.8 million for a 2%.
Okay. Yeah, that's in the unfunded slide.
And a 3% COLA is?
Each percent is 5.9 million.
It's just, yeah, okay. Maureen, you set, talk us?
I can, I can continue in something that I generally don't understand where. So discretionary accounts. The central office has one, but you use plural on discretionary accounts. So there are more than one discretionary account.
In the central office, each department has different, has a discretionary account.
What size is this discretionary? Because I see that you use a discretionary account to, you know, help balance the budget. That means, is that a, is this a sign that there is, you know, certain elasticity there, or is it still very?
Good question, because.
Very painful to do that.
It will be very painful for some departments, and so what we are going to do this year, we are very excited to have a new ERP system next year, so we can better understand and track our expenditures, but right now, we don't have that level of detail. So what we're going to be doing with this process, it's a, we believe it'll be a good way to kind of right-set some of the budgets, because what will happen is if there is a department that this type of a cut, 17%, would not even allow them to do the basic functions of what they need, then what we're going to do is what we do for our schools. They will have to do a contingency request and put in documentation about why they would need above and beyond that cut. This will help us for next year's budget, because then we'll have a better sense of where was 17% too much, and where was 17%? We could have even taken some more from other departments. So it's a beginning baseline to better understand where those needs are, and where we can better find ways for efficiencies. So our schools right now, they have a budget that they receive for staffing and other purposes. If they need additional funding, it's usually because of student needs. They do a contingency request, they put in a form, they explain the data, then we can provide additional resources beyond the budget. Our departments have just been given a amount each year for them to use, and they've been using it or not using it, or, you know, that type of thing. And so this will help us to better understand that.
But this is the size that, you know, the desired size of this is coming, is something that comes from the department or the school. They say, look, we calculated we would need $5 million to have, you know.
Yes.
Or is it something that you propose to them and say, look, this is the?
The way that these central office budgets have been done for years and years in Arlington is they do a baseline budget where they look at what they had previously, any new expenditures coming in, they may add to that. And so departments request additional funding based upon new potential needs of functions that they're doing. For example, in our curriculum office, if we have new expenditures needed for materials and supplies, they will ask to increase based on that. Our facilities and operations may look at the fact that certain materials are going up, cleaning supplies are going up based on inflation, they will put in a request for that. So each central office department puts in a request each year for their baseline funding with also any additional increases that they can attribute to needs for that year. But for many years, the baseline budget has just been given each year to departments. And so now, this is a way to try and right-set that and see, is that the right amount? Is it too little? Is it too much?
Okay, thank you. I yield my.
Matt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, for Superintendent Dron, I need a refresher on the mid-year, the January 1st 2% COLA. Did everybody do that? Did we alone do that?
Almost everyone except Falls Church in Northern Virginia did that.
And was it a, keeping in mind that we get a very small amount of money relative to the state?
Yes.
Was that state budget extra that then we had to match? Is that how it was, or was it?
Yes. So any funding that we receive from the state for compensation, if we don't put the additional match in, then we would lose that small portion. And so that was in the governor's budget that was not signed and adopted until like October, no, it wasn't adopted by the board till like almost October, which is why it went into the mid-year. But yes, we do have to match the additional in order to receive those dollars.
Could I do such a quick question? Because you say match, which makes it sound like it's equal, but it's actually 80, it's 80/20, right?
Complete the rest, not even 80/20, because in some cases, it's 100%. When you think about those non-SOQ positions, we give 100% to those. The others, it's the 80/20, yeah. So it's not an actual 50/50.
Yeah, when you say match, I mean, I'm just saying, when we're talking to our public, I just, I don't.
Yeah, that's good clarification.
I'm not sure what the word to use is, but I don't think it's match.
Right, if you use the visual from his previous slide, about the $17 million, that's where, that's where you can.
No, and I kind of remember that, I'm just trying to think about communicating to.
Right, the way that the state refers is a local match, but it's not, the local match is not an even local match, it's a much more.
Yeah, we put in 80 cents to get 20.
Right.
Yeah.
And 100 in other cases, yeah.
Or 100 and something, yeah.
So that's kind of, slide 20, if it's possible to put that up, standards of quality.
Slide 20?
If you can. Jeff McKay and many others have said, we fund less per pupil than West Virginia and Kentucky right now, which, no disrespect, is not what Virginia thinks of itself, or what we traditionally, historically, think we should be doing. I'll say my opinion, there is nearly zero chance that standards of quality will be fixed next year. I just want to make sure that we say that out loud, that will not occur. Electing governors has consequences, and in my opinion, this governor will not fix that problem. And so, given that fact, or opinion that I would propose is a fact, and we absolutely should work on it, I think we should be honest with our public that Arlington is property wealthy, so if more money came from the state, that might mean Arlingtonians on income tax might have to pay, you know, if we wanted to fix that. So we might not, property tax, we could get relief, but long-term fix might not be less total taxes for many Arlington residents. But we care about education. So slide 24 is sort of where I'm just trying, oh, I guess, so that's this year's budget, I guess.
Yes.
Because the year number, I think, that's this year's, but.
That's the proposal for next year.
Oh, proposal for next year. Okay, because I thought I saw in other presentations and in general, close the gap this year, we're looking at, we, and I mean both sides of the table, I want to say that clearly, both sides of the table, we're looking at 30 million next year, more than 40 the year after. And so, I don't, I mean, how do we try to, do we have any thoughts about how we try to address that? Without getting into specifics, because if, on the county side, if I point to a program that we are going to cut three years from now, then the advocates around that program for the next three years talk to me every day. And so, but that is a, that seems like a math problem, a structural deficit that we, county side too, have to consider and address, and I wondered if there are any thoughts on that, other than, you know, I don't think it's smart to necessarily be, I have a couple of specific programs, but that's not in my lane, and, you know, I wouldn't do that on the county side. You know, we haven't fixed senior homelessness and put that in our budget. And so, do we have any thoughts about how we think, how we work on that problem, given that the SOQs are probably not going to get fixed next year? Or does this mean that, you know, two-by-twos every day this summer, four of us should be getting together and working on this problem?
I think it's the latter, because this is a structural deficit that's going to continue. 28.4 million is the current gap, and you see, we find ways to get it to zero. We did provide for you some information, and we shared it at our work session this past Tuesday. In future years, what our gap is projected to be without any changes to any revisions, and next year, it's projected to be 31 million, and then the year after that, 8 million, and the year after that, 9 million. And that goes down as we're reducing the number of reserves that we're using. That's why you see that decline in the outward years. So there is going to be a big challenge with the structural deficit, because with the structural deficit, it simply means we don't have additional revenues to meet the demands of the needs coming in. And so there are going to need to be those hard conversations on what are some of the educational programs we have. 90% of our budget is in schools and is in personnel, and so it's not, we are cutting as much personnel as right now, maybe a little bit more we can do at the central level, but you can only do that to a point when 90% is in schools. And we do have to let, hard conversations. I'll turn to my school board members, if they want to share, we've been having some of this conversation, but I do think it's what you just said, have sitting down with those two-by-two and figuring out what are the priorities versus another. And as we see the planning factor study that's going to come out, that's going to also need to be into that consideration, because it's going to tell us, because we already know, and Ms. Secretary Sutton's on that committee, so she could talk about it, it's going to tell us, we have some needs and some very urgent matters.
So just because I put a lot on the table, let me put something else. Sign me up for two-by-twos all summer. Number two, this is part of why I'm, will not be below two cents on the tax, because we have a structural problem that we have to own part of, and I'm not ruling out two and a half, but I'm not going to be at one and a half, because we have to lean in. And, and, you know, there are things that, you know, we all have opinions about, you know, what county spends money on and schools spent money on, but, you know, I won't be below two, and yet I want to scrub it, and I don't want to just put all the hard work till the summer, but I'm also mindful of the tight timeframe. So at least, I feel like I ought to put a little something on the table that, at least I'm interested.
I would say we have two, we have two tasks in front of us. One is the work between now and May 9th to achieve a budget for this year, FY '25. And I would argue that as soon as this budget is put to bed in the summer, we have to have, removed from the pressure of any particular budget year, we have to have discussions in two-by-twos, and I think, if possible, among all of us, to talk in a general way about how we achieve a sustainable, a more sustainable framework for our schools, and how, how we have some challenging conversations about achieving a budget that is more sustainable than the one we have today. And that is not going to be an easy conversation, but we're, we're not equipped to function. We have, we have a limited number of levers we can pull on the revenue side to achieve a sustainable budget. We have money from the state, we have money from the county, we had reserves. We can't pull the reserve lever for much longer, because we made a decision, which I supported, to pull that lever a couple of years ago to right-size compensation and do right by our employees. And that's by and large where much of our reserves went. We, as you note, can wish as much as we want, that there's going to be money coming from the state that will change the state contribution to education. I would love for that to be the case, that's not going to materialize in the next 12 months. You have been great partners for us, and we know that you'll be great partners moving forward, but you have other pressures on your budget. And so we need to look, take a hard look at our, so, you get the picture on the revenue side, we need to do what we can on our expense side, but we need, we need to do some thinking about the bones of the house that we inhabit in terms of our budget, and do that work in the abstract, absent, absent the advocacy, the well-intentioned advocacy that is brought to bear on any particular budget.
I second what Mary said, and I will try not to repeat it, but I wanted to add that I think, Matt, you know, bringing up the SOQs is a really important thing as well, because much like all of the priorities that Mr. Schwartz was talking about, we make choices all the time in this community that are consistent with our values to go above and beyond the baseline. And that is true for our commitment to housing, it is true for our commitment to new construction, and it, we want it to be true for paying our teachers. And this year, we're having a very significant challenge in being where we want to be. And when you bring up next year, I think it's important to realize that the projections for next year are based on no COLA. So the efforts that we're making this year to do just a 1% COLA and a step, next year, currently, we're not able to even project a COLA. And, and I think that that's an important consideration, because it is a value judgment by everyone at this table. We want to be where we want to be on compensation, but that's just something that I think is a full community value. The other thing that's important to keep in mind next year is, you know, we are doing a lot of work right now to identify efficiencies, make cuts, close a significant gap this year, and that will, to some extent, assist us for next year. But it is important to start planning now, because there are things we can do over time that we cannot do in a 10-week budget cycle. And I think we also need to keep in mind that we will have to do this again next year, and that raises a question about which cuts should be made this year. Should we be going far into the schools for cuts if we are looking at a similar situation next year? And I think it's all part of a longer-term conversation that needs to be cognizant that we will be here again next year. And I'm also in for the two-by-twos all summer long.
Thank you.
I have three points that I want to make. One of my concerns, or one of the sort of things that I see when I look into the crystal ball, is that nobody's going to change the SOQ overnight, right? It's going to be a phased, it's going to take years for adjustments to be made. At the same time, I've been sitting since January in meetings about our planning factors and the adjustments we want to make, and I have a concern that those two things are going to wind up somewhat canceling each other out, because we are going to right-size some of the staffing for the students. some of the staffing for the students who will come to us now, not the students who came to us in 1990, but the students who we have now. And as we right-size that, it is an investment. Most, and the folks who are doing this work are, are digging in very hard on a lot of details, and the consultants have been phenomenal at working with us on it. Every now and then, we hit a point where it's less money, and then the next six pages in a row are additional dollars. So I see the, I don't see the change in the SOQ as necessarily, number one, it's not going to happen overnight, and number two, because we have different kinds of needs in the system, and now maybe the SOQ changes will help that, but we, you know, the planning factor study is right-sizing some of how we serve our students. And we're going to have to phase that in also, because there's no way we can afford to do that, all that work, in a, in a year or two. The other thing I want to say, you know, I lose sleep right now on the, on the place where we are, where I would be very, very, very happy if we could do an additional percentage on COLA, or additional 2% on COLA. And the, the tables that I'm shown tell me that the only way we could do that would be by taking staff out of the schools. So we would be taking staff out of the schools in order to, and that, you know, they're...
Cutting off the nose to spite the face?
It's not, it's not where we want to be, right? So, you know, I just want to put that on the table. And then I do want to maybe end on a slightly more positive note with my three points, and that is, a benefit to teachers beyond salary would be their ability to live in Arlington. And with that, I would pass it back across the table.
No, I'd love to pick it up right there, if I could, thank you. And I know other people have got their lights on. This is a great discussion, I like the idea of two-by-two continuing, I mean, we're starting to talk about some things that we really do need to talk about. However, I don't know if the nine of us are best prepared to talk about delivering education differently, you know, and that gets into the professionals. I mean, I just, in many ways, we're delivering education the way we kind of did, well, certainly when I was young, and that was a long time ago, but even before that. And I, so there may be some really major structural ways of delivering education somewhat differently, and I think we need to probably be looking at those, or you do, or you do, that then we can kind of respond to. You know, and I'll throw out, because I'm not running for school board, and people will probably be horrified, but, you know, I have heard recently that AI may be a really good way to start, like, getting, trying to individualize some instruction. You don't want to take away the people reaction, but there's ways that AI are working with computers, which our kids do all the time, might actually really effectively help to kind of find where they are, bring them up to a certain level, and be supported, the teachers, and that might leverage, leverage the teachers, which is, is more costly. Anyway, I'm just tossing that out. I think, I guess I'm saying, I really would like to do two-by-twos, I'm not sure I want to do two-by-twos talking about sort of the same thing that we keep doing. I'd like to talk about doing things really differently, and I'd like some professional help to do that effectively. So I'll just toss that out as we're kind of all volunteering our summers away. All right, Susan's got a question she hasn't called on, I think I'll go to Susan now, if that's all right.
Great. I just need a little help with math, since we did a lot at the table already. Are the enrollment projections in here somewhere, and can you guide us to them?
I believe they are in your binder.
While we find those, just make sure I'm tracking. Page 24 has the spring update, is that enrollment-related?
Yes, that is enrollment-related.
And so it's projected that we would be adding a certain number of students in the spring of next year?
Certain number of students, or also students needing special education, or students needing EL services, is a combination of the two. And that is kindergarten through 12th grade, there's a separate projection, because we've had questions about pre-K, but that's not part of this.
Okay, and so that's always going up, I guess, is the question I am asking, like, does everyone, does anyone ever leave some of those services mid-year, too?
I didn't have a question.
Maybe, one be the page you're on might help.
Sorry, page 24. Okay, but that's, it's student-driven, there's a certain number of students needing new services.
It is student-driven, so the spring, the spring update is, we receive information after we've done our special education in December, they do December 1 count, and then they also look at the number of students that are currently in the process of being evaluated, and then they base that upon then the number of potential services that are going to be needed, additional staffing for that. Then there's also a look at our English learner population, and that number of students that are coming in. We tend to see a larger number in January, February, because in Central and South America, many of the school systems, that's when they're ending, and then, you know, their summer is different than when our winter, so we tend to see that, and we look at the number coming in there. And then the third one is based upon our September 30th actual enrollment compared to our January enrollment, and we see the differences there, school by school. So it's actual student enrollment, and then it's predictions for the number of students who will be needing special education services or EL services, and then we would need some more FTE, special ed FTEs, or EL FTEs.
Great, and then similar question on page five. We have, I don't know, 60, 70, 70 FTEs added, is that because of enrollment changes? Page five.
Slide five?
Slide five.
Yes, those are all, that 43.65, that is for the spring enrollment, that is exactly what that is.
Okay, gotcha.
Oh, it's on the screen now.
Okay, that was one area of question, of confusion, thank you. The other is, you always go to the last page of the book, right, to find out the answer? Next to the last page, the budget forecast there. I guess the question, you've shared a couple of thoughts about what could happen with the state, what could happen with student needs, but what's the worst case there? Like, how big of a hole are we in if we think about fiscal year '28, for instance? Like, if we wanted to operate today to make sure that those of us who will still be here for fiscal year '28 have a really easy summer that year, or not, the year before?
Well, these numbers on that page are the very conservative numbers, so those are kind of like the worst case, and are the worst case with our current expenditures. So I say that caveat to say if we start adding new things, adding our planning factor, we add more positions, then that's going to go up. Based on the current number of what we have in terms of positions and our current programs we have, that's a conservative, because actually, even there, the estimates for the county and the, excuse me, the state revenue are conservative estimates for that, doesn't take into account any additional potential changes from, you know, future administrations, or changes to what we saw in the General Assembly requests to have. So it's a very conservative baseline, given what we know now. Because I want to discouple that, because what Ms. Zecher Sutton said, if we have some changes to that, and what Ms. Turner said in terms of if we want to think about higher compensation amounts for our employees, then that number could change, too.
Yeah, so that's the other, that was my, thank you.
This is based on a...
This is based on 1% this year, and no additional COLA ever?
And steps every year, because in our, in our board policy, we have step as a requirement each year. So that's based on, we give a step every year, but it also doesn't account for any money, which, you know, is very little, that the state would give us for any compensation.
Okay, so again, like, kind of worst-case budget, best-case, keep competitive teacher position, would we add 3% COLA to each of these, 2% to each of these, and then it's...
Yeah, well, right now, we need another 3% to add for this, protect that for next year, and then probably, we'd have to look at what other surrounding jurisdictions are doing, because some are changing, and that's 2% to 3% to 4% COLA is what we've seen on average of, probably being okay, but if some school system goes like 6% or 7%, then we'd have to readjust each year to try and make it competitive.
And so, and that would compound, right? So if we fixed it this year, you'd have 11.8, I think it is.
That's right.
And then on top of that, you'd be in the hole, next year, 72 million before you do a COLA, so that'd be 72 plus 18 is 90 million?
I'd have to check.
Or not quite, 16?
Six million per 1%.
Okay, so I guess to the structural deficit question, given that we are a community that cares deeply about our teachers and about our student achievement and our schools, I think we need to really tackle that. Like, it's not okay that the worst case is actually 120 million, probably, by the time you pencil it all out. So.
More to talk about in the summer.
More to talk about that. And one last thing on compensation, the Fairfax number of 6%, I think if you go back and read the interaction between their supervisors and the school board, what they, if they took their advertised max tax rate, it would be more like 3, it would be 65% of what they asked for. I don't know how, what the mix of compensation is, but I would assume you're down to 3.5% if it makes you feel any better. It makes me feel a little better.
Yeah.
And then one last question.
The other thing I would say...
Okay, one last, real quick, because we still have another section we want to talk about, so.
The other caveat, which is, which is good, but also we want to be in the top three, is that as we have adjusted our salary scale during the compensation study we did a couple of years ago, now that we're six, we're not six in the low end, we're like 1% off from each, so we're closer now. All the jurisdictions around us have been competitive, who can be first. So we're all tightening ourselves in accord to be real close to one another, as opposed to being very far apart from one another, if that makes sense.
So sixth is not as bad as it used to be?
It's not as bad as it used to be, but we don't want to be six, but, but it's not as bad as it used to be.
Yeah, all right.
Great, and then I think the question I hear the most from community members is, why are we number one in spending, and potentially number six in teacher compensation, so per pupil? And if there's any talking points there about the mix of kids that we have, the needs, but that is a question that pops to the top pretty frequently.
Couple of things, one, that's based, if you look at our WABE guide, and we did share with you our WABE, which is comparing Washington-area-based education, school systems, you can see the class size is a factor there, when they weigh that in, and we are towards the top of having lower class size, so that impacts, because that's FTEs, when they do that comparison per pupil. And then we do have some additional services and programs in Arlington that are very, we're very proud of, but that does change as well, because we're investing more into staff for those programs. I would say those two pieces are why the comparative number comes out much higher in those ways.
Okay, we have another sec, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Carr, tell us, but I wish, why didn't I bring out my timer?
But that would mean that the two-by-two, I have a, I have always a reluctance to talk about structural deficits. I am more prone to say, what's the dynamic growth of the, of the, right? This is what we have to digest here, what's the dynamic growth, and what is, you know, an effective diagram of growth? The conversation here is about, you know, what is the balance between our focus on programs on the, on the educational project of APS, you know, the, the accompanying, you know, staffing that it has, and where we find the efficiency? So when, what we do already today is to figure out, you know, what can be done more efficient already, so that it sets us up to have conversations that can negotiate something, instead of just reacting to the very fact of, you know, increase in salaries, et cetera. So this is why, for example, like, Mr. Ferranti, I'm more at the 2% right now, at the 2 cents right now, and, and I want to know a little bit more about what this means for the schools, you know, the, the lower part of the, of slide 25, a yield.
Okay. I really, I did not kick him under the table.
On that last point, we, we are going to be engaging when we come back, the first week of April, with our schools to better understand what that would mean for them, and so we're going to be meeting with principals to get a sense, if you, this is the amount you actually have, what are some of those things? Once we compile that list of things, I'll be happy to share that with the county boards, so you can see.
Really very informative.
So one, a quick question, do the, the lower level of reserves, where are you on our side? We have like requirements for how many reserves we have to keep, to keep our triple, double, double, triple, triple-A. That's not a, you don't have those kinds of restraints or anything?
I mean, I would, you want to go?
I mean, there must be some sort of standard, right, I guess, or maybe not?
Well, I think that, I think that the reserves are something that we always watch very carefully, and we know what the choices are that we're making.
Okay.
And we, and we break out our reserves into certain categories that are really meaningful, like having a compensation reserve, having, you know, moving the laps and turnover into that unequivocally. No, we never have a conversation about, are we going to move the laps and turnover into the compensation reserve? That is what it is there for, so.
Okay, and then one bit, I don't want to be obnoxious with advice, but, I'm not, not meaning to be obnoxious, and probably you've done this, are we trying to leverage, for the long-term thing about the state issue, leverage VSBA and VAS? Back in my day, we did a lot of that, and that was really pretty effective, it's a long, good, 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 because I think we need to leverage that. I think, are we ready to move on to the next? I think we are, all right. So that brings us to our, because last year, we, we both talked quite a bit about mental health and substance abuse, and what we need to do about behavioral health in our young people, and I think a lot has happened, and we're going to get a report on that. All right, and I think we have Deb Warren and Darrell, hello, it's nice to see you again, Dr. Sampson, yeah, yeah, nice to see you both, all right. Take it away.
Okay, so we're excited today to have a few minutes to share with you where we are, both as a school system and as a Department of Human Services, and the partnership that we've continued over the last year, as we all try to address the youth substance abuse programming, as well as our mental health programming. So next slide, please. So, want to ground us a little bit, so from the schools' perspective, we're really looking at making sure that we're providing supports to our students for behavioral health and wellness, not only for those students who maybe need more intensive interventions, but we're really trying to look at this from a preventative approach as well. So all of our students receive education in social, emotional learning and wellness, as well as having access then to more supports if they need them. So all the way from sort of those, every student having access to school counselors, all the way to some of our students having needs for small groups, as well as those students who maybe need some more intensive individual supports. Next slide, please. So providing some updates, the first thing I want to share is that APS was recently acknowledged by the White House for our work in trying to address the opioid crisis, particularly in our youth. So we were highlighted and shared our example, really, of how we've provided naloxone training to our staff, how we've provided opportunities for our high school students to carry naloxone, as well as installing emergency boxes in all of our schools. That was truly a partnership with the Arlington Addiction Recovery Initiative, as well as for us, certainly, our facilities and operations staff and our substance abuse counselors. So we were very excited for all of that work that we've been doing. In addition, over the last year, we've really expanded our programming and our partnerships through some of our community organizations, so we've been working with Arise and Flourish, who shares information about the impact of addiction on the individual, and they've been really providing some more education to our APS 12th grade students this year. And then one of their members also happens to serve on the Community Services Board here in Arlington. Silent No More is another organization we're working with that comes out of the Drug Enforcement Agency, and they've been really focusing with our students and our community on the impact of addiction on the family. So both of these organizations, we've really tried to enhance our preventative efforts, not only with the education that our students receive, starting in grade four all the way through grade 12, but also trying to touch in a couple of different ways, where we're really talking about the impact of the addiction, in addiction, in addition to that basic information about substances, what they do to the body. Last year, we were really excited to be able to add additional substance abuse counselors through the school board's budget, and so with that, we've been able to enhance our services at both the middle schools and the high schools, and now we have our substance abuse counselors running some evidence-based programming at all of our schools, really providing that into small groups of our students who maybe are beginning to experiment or use substances. So really trying to get that early prevention intervention in place. And then, as I just shared, we have expanded our naloxone in schools program, we have 442 of our ninth through 12th graders who are carrying naloxone in schools with their parent permission and training. We've also trained 2017 APS staff, and we have almost 1,700 that have elected to carry naloxone themselves. And then, again, we have emergency naloxone available on every floor of our secondary schools, as well as available at SciFAX. Next slide, please. When we look particularly at our work on mental health within the schools, a lot of this has truly been collaborative with our partners in Department of Human Services. In terms of where APS is, we've added our deans of students who are at three of our middle schools, and then our three comprehensive high schools. middle schools and then our three comprehensive high schools. And those staff specifically work to provide intervention to students who maybe are having some behavioral challenges within our schools. And they've also been key in working on some of our concerns regarding chronic absenteeism this year, promoting positive school cultures, really trying to create an inviting space and create a trusting environment for students. We were able to add the 10 intervention counselors at the secondary level, who focus on providing those evidence and research-based interventions to middle and high school students. And this is usually in a small group format. We're really trying to capitalize on the social learning nature of our secondary students. An example of one of these interventions might be something like check-in, check-out, which really aims to help form a connection between a student and a staff member at school. It's often an intervention that we use, particularly around things like absenteeism. We recently added telehealth services for mental health services through a organization called Hazel Health. And that's for currently our high school students. We are interested in expanding potentially to our middle school students in the future. But they can receive short-term therapeutic counseling outside of the school day through a telehealth provider. It is free to any APS high school student, and as well, it's available in multiple languages, which was something we knew that our community wanted. And then we've also worked to provide a couple of therapeutic day treatment clinicians. That's a program where students who are eligible for Medicaid can receive behavioral health services within the school. And then we were recently awarded a grant from the Department of Behavioral Health and Disability Services to provide some additional clinical supports, particularly on our middle schools. But we're also working collaboratively with Department of Human Services to expand our already in-place youth mental health first aid program. So that's an evidence-based program, which helps to educate anyone in the community about how to recognize and provide support and referrals for young people that may be exhibiting mental health challenges. This grant is going to allow us to expand and provide bilingual youth mental health first aid, so fully in Spanish, which we're very excited about, doing some pilots hopefully in April and May, as well as to begin to train staff on teen mental health first aid. So that would take the youth mental health first aid information, but really break it down into something that could be provided to our high school students so that they then are getting a similar education in recognizing, understanding, and getting resources to help refer peers within their school who may be exhibiting signs of mental health distress. So I'd like to then turn this over to my colleague, Deborah Warren.
Thank you, Daryl. And I do want to say, as a county government employee, what a joy it is to work with APS. And I would have to say, over the last two years, our relationship has really accelerated. And you, you can hear that threaded throughout what we're presenting. So, thank you. So our, we, we have a number of existing county efforts. We have our children's behavioral health care. We had some real issues with staffing, which is, you know, I heard the conversation about compensation for teachers and the competition with surrounding jurisdictions. In the field of behavioral health, this is a national problem. We, we compete with the local community services boards for licensed clinicians. It takes on average an entire year to actually secure, you know, hire somebody qualified for those positions. But I am pleased to say that we are currently fully staffed in our children's behavioral health care. And we focus on the most vulnerable who do not have insurance and are on Medicaid, to ensure that those with the highest needs are met. And I'll talk to you in a second about our Crisis Intervention Center, but I want to highlight Ari, our Arlington Addiction Recovery Initiative. This program developed as a stakeholder group seven years ago. And we have a report about the outcomes of Ari over the last, you know, six years, which are very, very exciting. They're posted online. We have our own webpage. But the main point I want you to take away, because I know this is a big concern for all of us that care about kids in this community, is that there is an inverse relationship that we have documented graphically between the saturation of naloxone that Daryl was alluding to in the last year and the decrease in fatalities as a result of overdose. I mean, it's like exactly inverse. So we can't say one causes the other, but you know, that's correlation, a very strong correlation. Today, I learned that our partner, ACPD, the Police Department, has added youth aggregated data on overdoses for 2023 and 2024 to the website. And this is to the Ari website. And this is important. It's been a gap. And I think it's really critical for transparency. And what I want you to know, and what you, if you take away one thing, you should know that in the first quarter of this year, we have seen a significant decrease in youth opioid events, also a decrease in overdoses and fatal overdoses. So we're doing the right thing. And by the way, I have a present for you. I brought everybody Narkeon, very easy to administer. You should have it in your glove compartment. You ne, there you go. Thank you, Mary. You never know, you never know when you might encounter an individual that could benefit from using Narkeon. Also, I brought stress balls, which I think you really need after this session. So I'll get that afterwards. Next slide, please. So we wanted to highlight the county investment that came about last year following this joint work session, March 31st. We, the county invested in four full-time clinicians allocated primarily for the high schools. That was the, the concern. And I have to say, it has been a phenomenal experience to work closely with central office on the development of this program. So I already mentioned that it takes a long time to find a qualified licensed clinician to provide these kinds of services. And then you talk about having a specialty with kids, right? So that's another hole carved out, right? Yeah. And, but I am thrilled to report that we have filled all four of these positions. The other thing I want to say is that there's a lot of opportunities for people to go into behavioral health and do telehealth. And I, I get a recruitment thing like every hour. And, you know, less paperwork. You don't have to go to, you know, go places and, and interview people who might be having their first episode psychosis, whatever. So I'm really thrilled. We have really good people on board. And the process was that APS, Wendy Crawford, who works under Daryl, participated in every interview. We had 40 interviews to select these four candidates who are, you know, guests in a host setting. So we need those collaborative skills, right? But prior to even bringing them on board, we worked, and a number of people were involved in this. And I think it's really important to highlight on a memorandum of understanding, right, to really clarify roles and responsibilities and start setting the parameters, you know, who does what in terms of, of the behavioral health continuum of care. You saw what Daryl presented initially in terms of the tiers, but it's really important also because we really worked through the HIPAA on our side, the HIPAA requirements for confidentiality and privacy, but collaboration across our systems, which are totally different systems, and of course, FERPA on the school side. So it involved two sets of attorneys and multiple leadership staff. So we were thrilled. We got that done in one summer. So that's a huge accomplishment. So in terms of our ramp up, we are working through the protocols. The teams are working collaboratively with the school mental health teams. There's culture issues to be worked through, space issues. And so at this point, we are pleased to report our first clinician started in Wakefield in November, and our two newest clinicians just started Monday. We have no data to report on them, but they're getting settled in. We also fast forwarded our onboarding process. You know, it takes time to learn an electronic health record and all of the resources and, and all of that. How to, you know, what do you do when somebody needs to be hospitalized? What is the process? So we've had 73 referrals so far and working through, again, all of the nitty-gritty details of getting this program up and running. One of the things that we are considering is looking at our existing capacity and considering shifting some of the effort towards the middle school. You know, older kids can refuse behavioral health treatment once they're like over 16. And I think some of the middle school students might be ripe for that kind of intervention. So we are taking a look at that, particularly in our highest need schools. So you'll hear more about that in the future. Next slide, please. Want to mention our Crisis Intervention Center, which is five coming rooms over at our Sequoia Plaza. We have really, thanks to significant county support, really beefed up our staffing and our security at the CIC. We have had 550 contacts since November of 2022. It's a safe, comfortable, trauma-informed setting where folks can get, you know, that therapeutic space to meet with behavioral health clinicians, be evaluated when they're in a crisis and be stabilized in the moment. We have a prescriber so they can receive medication. We have a dedicated therapist for youth, which is a very important part of our emergency services staffing. Because when we started, you know, early in 2023, we had about 25% of our clients coming through the doors were minors, but it has escalated and is now 45% of the people we see are under 18. So I think that's important to know that that's turning into a critical resource. So about 50% of those individuals are either self or referred by their families, family members. And almost 80% are able to return home after the intervention. And a third of them had no prior mental health or substance use treatment history, which I think is important because we're capturing people who have emerging needs. And one of the roles is to connect them to ongoing services and supports, which are primarily outpatient mental health and substance use treatment. Next slide, please. Speaking of substance use treatment, we do have, we have worked on sort of trying to expand the service array in this area. And we developed a contract with National Capital Treatment and Recovery. Some people know it as the Old Phoenix House. And we, we paid for slots. We paid to stand up this program to include intensive outpatient services, substance use treatments, adolescents. We've had 20 admissions since June. It's a fairly new program. They just received CAF accreditation recently, so they are open to receiving persons on Medicaid and being able to bill. So they will be opening up to the world at large in a couple of months. The primary population that has been served are Hispanic males. So having a Spanish-speaking ability is really critical. Another sort of program in development that I want you to be aware of is the, the five community services boards' executive directors partner and work very closely together. We have a regional office. We pool, I think it's about $50 million. And we develop programming that it would serve the region because sometimes it doesn't make sense to have them in individual jurisdictions. So one of the top priorities for us that we've put a lot of time and energy over the last two years in developing is a medical withdrawal and substance use residential treatment program for adolescents. This would be an opportunity for teens to, who are addicted to opioids, to detox with medication-assisted treatment, which we do have available through National Capital Treatment and Recovery on an outpatient basis. So we applied for an Opioid Abatement Authority Regional Grant, and we were awarded it. And it's 2.4 million for the initial year of planning and ramp up and $5 million a year for the next four years. And then there's a renewal opportunity for five years after that. And there's a small.
That's great. I just want to interrupt, I just want to say, that's great.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's, I, I'm bringing up, it's a lot of, I, I use the phrase invisible behind-the-scenes work, but I'm really proud of it. Each jurisdiction had to come up with a match, so we had to get leadership to agree to that. And the county did agree to, to providing that match. It's 180,000. Drop in the bucket compared to what the service will cost in terms of the, the, the development of the facility and then the operational ongoing costs. So here's the skinny. We have, you're probably wondering, when the heck is this going to open up? We did develop a request for proposal to do interim service provision. We're looking for a vendor to provide those services. And then we are actually looking for a building to be central to the Northern Virginia region to actually purchase and develop the program. So that will take time, probably four years. So we're, we're trying to start this program in the next, you know, year. Okay, next slide. So this is, a slide refers to the county manager and the county manager's budget. This is an all-community approach that was described in the manager's budget on the county side to the overarching teen mental health and substance use issues in our community. And when I say all community, I mean all community. It would involve APS, court service unit, juvenile detention, DPR, DHS, and, you know, nonprofits and the community at large. It's divided really into three buckets. And the first bucket is the intervention piece. And we really are looking at where are the needs of those highest need, highest risk youth? And you heard me mention that, about the concern about Hispanic males and opioids. So one of the gaps we see is the need for intensive care coordination for families that are Spanish-speaking. And so to that end, we are looking at developing a dedicated bilingual case management program to help those families who may be new to this country to really navigate the systems, which frankly can be really challenging, the systems of care, and to overcome language barriers and transportation, to provide monitoring, mentoring, and support to those families. Some of the other pieces, the next four bullets under intervention, really are portraying to the court services unit, and they involve beefing up some existing programs that we have, the RISE Mentor Program, which is like an intensive mentoring program for very at-risk youth, the Young Achievers and Girls Outreach Programs that are after-school programs, primarily serving the BIPOC population, and adding a detention probation counselor who would be at the front door working towards diversion. We talk about diversion a lot in our adult system of care. It's a huge concern in our, our community. And I think it's really important to take a look at that because I think kids don't do well in detention. And I think we need to divert them from being in that kind of setting. One of the pieces that is happening is that a contract has been developed with National Capital Addiction Recovery to bring intensive outpatient programming for substance use to the detention center where we see kids detoxing. So this is an opportunity to provide medication-assisted treatment in the detention center and initiate that treatment, which can be continued when they leave the detention center, usually lengths of stay are like a week, 10 days. The next piece of this is prevention. It's a multi-pronged approach and will be broad-based, involve a broad-based media campaign. A big piece of that will include ACES, that's Adverse A big piece of that will include ACES, that's Adverse Childhood Experiences, training for our youth-serving staff in the community, not just what ACES are, but how to mitigate them and how to strengthen families, you know, so that they know what protective factors to bring into play. And also, you know, community-wide training for civic associations and other organizations that work, that touch on children's lives. Beefing up out-of-school programming, I know this is a big area of advocacy in our community. Our teen nights are expanding and getting 100, 150 kids. So there's a need to continually increase that weekend programming. It's very staff-intensive, so there'll be an additional youth program there for DPR. Late-night soccer, very popular, and basketball, and after-school drop-in programming and new teen club pilots. Education and engagement, education engagement. One of the things that has been very successful in other jurisdictions, I came from Alexandria, where I served for 32 years, and worked with our Children, Youth, and Families Collaborative Commission on the development of a children and youth plan, community-wide plan. We talked about this at the partnership meeting, you'll remember. So I'm the mother of that plan. And one of the things that is so important, and that plan is still in place and was integrated with ACPS. In fact, Julie Crawford, who is here with us today, oh, there she is. She actually worked on that with us. So it was an all-community plan, all hands on deck, really building that plan on data, really doing a lot of thought about measurable goals and objectives, what are the priorities of the community, what are the, you know, largest needs? And it has evolved over time with a dashboard and so on. So that's something we really feel like we want to bring to Arlington. So we plan to begin that work in the fall, linking our arms together and, well, continuing to link our arms together and, and developing that plan. I just want to caution you, though, this is a lot of work and it's going to take some time to do it right. So just want to put that out there. And then there's a lot of need to fill gaps in our outreach and engagement. There are, we, just, just the other night, I think it was last night or the night before, there was a meeting around communication. I saw Bryn earlier, I know she, she led that meeting. But we really need to figure out how we can enhance our strategy, our digital strategies, and our, just our communication strategies as a whole, so that people know as we develop further resources, what they are, what the existing resources are, and ensure that everything is available in the languages that people speak, so they know, they can, they can access those services. So those meetings are already underway. So, yeah, and it's a total of almost $2 million that's, the county is investing in those, those strategies. Next slide, please. I know there's some questions, but we'll take them afterwards. So speaking of ACES, we are kicking off our ACES campaign under the leadership of the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families. I know it's been discussed at the last, I think, four meetings, and planning is heavily underway with support from DHS's Child and Family Services. But let me stress, this is an all-community program. There's a youth track, there's an adult track. I want to, I'm memorizing your faces, I want to see you all there on Saturday, May 18th. We need you there at WNL High School, 9:30 to 2:30. Get there by 10:00. This is a community event to bring everybody together, to focus on those adverse childhood experiences and how to reduce their impact. I want to stress that because, you know, we hear a lot about the problems, but we need to really focus in on what are the solutions? What can we do to support our youth to thrive and flourish? Next slide, please. Couple of other things I want you to keep in your binoculars as future things coming down the pike. For the last seven years, we have been working, we DHS have been working in partnership with VHC Health around behavioral health issues. We literally have a stakeholder group that meets every single month with VHC. This group started off in a very challenging environment, and I have to say, I am thrilled to say that VHC hurt us, and as time went, we, we worked collaboratively and we came to an agreement, we need to double the, the number of behavioral health beds at VHC. Well, then VHC decided, you know, when, when VHC had determined they were going to do a major renovation, and there was a land swap in, that was agreed upon in 2018 of continuous land, and there were five conditions that VHC had to meet as a pad of that land swap. Well, VHC has met all of those requirements, and they have partnered with persons with lived experience, advocates, family members of persons with mental health issues, and DHS, and the CSP. And low and behold, they came to us with this proposal to develop Carlin Springs Wellness Pavilion, which will be a state-of-the-art behavioral health hospital and rehab hospital. There will be 72 adolescent and adult behavioral beds there, but I want to say something. There'll be 20, there'll be a 24-bed adolescent behavioral health unit. Today, we have zero. We need this so badly, it brings tears to my eyes, really, going to get verklempt. Anyway, they are working right now on an adolescent-intensive outpatient program, which will be housed at the main campus. They're opening this in late spring. They're just getting, bringing on a medical director for that program so that they can also prescribe medication-assisted treatment. And they will be developing an adolescent-intensive outpatient program. There is a lot of behind-the-scenes work on this project. The Certificate of Public Need, which is gigantic, was submitted, and our public hearing is April 22nd. I say "our" because we're very involved in this. Okay. And this program, this hospital will be constructed with an anticipated opening of late 2025. The other piece is they are developing a comprehensive psychiatric emergency program so that individuals who go to the emergency department will get treatment instead of just waiting for a psych bed. The last project I want to tell you about is we are also working regionally on developing a crisis-receiving center, actually multiple ones, three of them. But this one that we're developing in, down in Woodbridge at Gander Mountain will have 32 beds for youth, and that will be available for the region. Half of them will be short-term, up to 14-day residential crisis beds, and the other half will be 23-hour recliners. So we're working very closely with Connections, our private partner on that project. And that concludes-
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we have with us, I believe, our co-chairs for the Arlington Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families. Welcome. And if you all would let, don't go away, Dr. Sampson and Ms. Warren, but they're going to come up and talk, and then we will take questions. And we're only, I don't know, half an hour, 15 minutes past what we were hoping for. So we'll try to keep it moving. Come on up. Mr. Carlson-
Yeah, I'll make mine shorter.
Yeah, yeah. Is, is Janetta here? Laura?
No, no, she couldn't make it.
Okay, okay.
She's actually working.
Okay. Thank you. All right. David, Mr. Carlson, now over to you.
Yeah, David Carlson, that's who I am. And I'm a, I've been on the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Family for, Families for a dozen years, and the last couple of years as a co-chair with Janetta. And it's, it's been a great experience, and I think the May 18 event that's coming up is going to be really good. A lot of people will learn, one of the, some of the issues we've identified is that a lot of people can't figure out how to get service for what they need specifically. And that's one of the things that will be addressed at Arlington Unite, Unite, which is what we're calling that event. And as they, as Deborah said, there's a youth track, there's an adult track, a parent track, and multiple languages will have the airpieces so that people can find that stuff out. And just to keep it much shorter than the eight minutes I had right here, but-
That would actually be helpful, thank you.
No, reading stuff is not good.
Yeah.
But you know what, I'll send it to-
Yes, please do. Oh, please do. Yep.
And I would like to say that there's no question that one of the things that would help quite a bit with what we're facing, what our, what our children are facing, is the after-school time and activities in the community. It's, it really is, is pretty good now, but it could be a lot better and a lot more impactful. And one of the things that I have started working on, and Janetta, Janetta has helped me as well, is, you know, and also talking, hearing from Mr. Schwartz about can't find providers to do work. So I think we have them, and they're sitting in our 11th and 12th grade classrooms. And I, I really would like to figure out a way, and I'd like to test it, and I'd like to raise money to make it happen, to have, to have those junior and senior kids in high school work for two or three hours for three to five days, and either get whichever they prefer, whether it's service hours or whether it's pay. And I understand there's a problem paying people, but if it, if the money comes from somewhere else, or whether it's stipends or hourly rates at minimum wage, I mean, most teenagers now, minimum wages come up, they'd love to have it, love to see them earn money for college. And I'd love them to see, we'd, we'd like to make it a diversified group, and I'd love to see them as a respected 11th and 12th graders, working with 5th and 6th and 7th graders of different types of people. And I think that would move the needle a little bit in terms of how kids work.
Great. We need to, yeah.
Yeah, I've worked for 50 years in youth programs, and I've seen that time and time again. The 12 and 13-year-olds don't want to talk to me, or maybe anybody at this table, but they are more than happy to talk to a 15 or 16-year-old.
My 13-year-old doesn't want to talk to me, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so there's, there's lots of ways to go. Let's see if, you know, what else have I got on here for you? Some of the same stuff you just heard from Deborah, where some of you probably remember when we did Arlington All-In seven, seven or eight years ago? That was the inspiration for putting together this Arlington Unite. And I hope you will come. I'll be there until noon because it's my 50th wedding anniversary-
Oh, it's nice.
-that day, and I figure I can take the morning off, but I gotta-
A true Arlington romance.
Pardon me?
True Arlington romance, you're going to volunteer in the morning and then get together.
There you go.
Yes, yes, no, that's great, thank you. I think, Maureen, Ms. Coffey is our liaison, is that right?
I'm the liaison for the Teen Network Board, but Miss Cunningham is.
Actually, actually, they, I, I do have one message that I probably ought to read here, and that is from the, the Teen Network Board. And here, here it is. Lastly, we'd like to thank all of you for the funding that the board has provided to the current fiscal year in support of many requests, requests made, raised by the Teen Network Board, which includes the addition of mental health and substance use schools, more robust mental health and substance use education in the schools, the availability of Narcan in schools, and the legislative advocacy that is, that may allow Narcan to be carried and administered by students. And a lot of us at the partnership have been trained now on how to use Narcan. And it's a great program. So we look forward to engaging the, the kids, older and younger. You know, if we get even a 10 or a dozen in one of our high schools to, to start this out and see if it does indeed move the table. You know, the, the statistics are bad, our kids are up against a hard time. And, you know, with working with each other, I think they'll get past it somehow.
Yeah. Well, I think empowering our young people, that, your, your idea for some internships is great, which is why I was sort of seeing who was our liaison, and I know you probably have a liaison too. I don't know, Susan, if you want to talk about that a little bit, but I would think maybe this is something that I, I'd love to see worked on in the background, getting, you know, getting, getting sort of a work-study, some sort of program up where they can actually help and-
And so I already know the answer, but you might wonder, who benefits the most? The helper or the person being helped? No question, they both benefit.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know, Susan, if you want to-
Yeah, we, we've just begun our journey together, but really so excited about the work that the partnership is doing and the May 18 event. The, a very similar recommendation came up last week or the week before when Takas and I were able to meet with parents at Barrett Elementary, and their question was, as we go into middle school, how do we like have the same coziness and the same connection to other adults and other students? And so we talked a lot about a potential like looping of a staff member or volunteer or a program. And similarly, could the 5th graders do something at school with the little ones? And then could the 8th graders go down to the 5th graders so that we, because we know that humans like to be with other humans and kids like to be with older kids and vice versa. So I love, I love that and look forward to working with you on it.
And if, if it's not free, it's inexpensive.
Yeah, no, that's right. That's great. Takas, did you want to add something?
Yes, a very, very short question, because this is, for me, a very intriguing pathway. Does your organization have a, provide, provide some sort of, you know, capacity, qualification, training for, for youth that would like to take that leadership role?
There's definitely some available. We don't actually do it ourselves. I mean, the Narcan training, for example, is there. We can arrange that for groups or classrooms.
So for being, for being leaders in, in, you know, in, in after-school programming, I would be very interested to figure out how to create a core of that.
Right. Well, I think you have to find out what their expertise is. Like, there'll be athletes who could start up a great basketball game or soccer. I know there's groups here that want to do the soccer. And kids who have, have gotten leadership training on their own, and, and some could be developed. It wouldn't be hard. And there'd be a lot of different jobs, reading to them, helping them with homework, tutoring on subjects.
All kinds of things. Mary, Ms. Kader.
I'm gonna, I think those are different two-by-twos we're going to have this summer because I'm interested in that topic as well. But as the liaison to the partnership on the, on the school board side for a couple of years now, I, I just want to close out, I think, with two, two quick compliments. One is, I met last year about this time with Ms. Warren and Dr. Sampson, and I had been doing a little internet research and came across the Alexandria Children, Youth, and Families Master Plan. And I thought, why don't we have something like this in Arlington? And I remember asking you on this virtual meeting, why don't we have this in Arlington? And you said, we're going to get there. And I'm so excited to hear you say that we are getting there now in Arlington. And any way that I can be supportive of you, I'm a huge fan of Alexandria's plan. And one of the pieces I love is not just the plan, but that every month they post a progress report on their website for the whole community about one specific area of the plan and what's been happening. So I look forward, I know it will take time, I look forward to seeing us have something like this in Arlington. And the second compliment I want to pay to Ms. Warren and my county colleagues is your fantastic recent hire for the partnership of your staff liaison. And I don't have, Roya, I don't have my computer in front of me and I'm going to forget her full name, but she is a powerhouse and she's a fantastic hire, and I think we're all going to be the better for her energy.
Roya Candia.
Great. Anything more on your side, questions, comments? I think, I feel like our side's been talking a lot, so I think I'm going to turn it back over to you. Dave, you run things for a little bit.
We've been sharing the conversation.
Yeah. I just want to make a very quick plug for the Youth Mental Health First Aid Program because I did it myself last summer. You do two hours virtual, and I'm saying this for everyone because community members and parents and everyone can do it. You do two hours ahead of time virtual, it's then nine to three, it's done once a month in, at Syfax. And when I was there in the summer, I will tell you, there were a number, there were several parents there, there was a middle school library-
There was a middle school library assistant who was not being paid. She was, you know, 10-month employee, but she was there in the summer doing that day. There was an elementary school special ed assistant, same thing, not getting paid. They're on her own in order to, you know, support kids. There was somebody who clearly had cultural barriers to understanding how we approach mental health in the U.S. And so he asked a lot of questions and was able to get information that he, that was new to him. And I just, it's a really good program. I would encourage all of you to do it yourselves, and I would encourage as many community members as possible. Again, it's once a month, and you can, you can reach out to Dr. Sampson, and he'll get you in.
Well, I can tell you that eight or nine years ago, one of the few things that moved the needle on the mental health of our kids in our schools was when all the teachers went to mental health first aid. And the number of days or weeks that were counted as sad days for our students went, the number went down.
That's great. It's great to have metrics like that.
It's a good program, for sure.
Excellent. Yeah, yeah, we can ask questions of staff. Whoever you want to ask a question for, it's fine, although I had turned it over to David, but let's go ahead.
I think we're okay.
I think you're okay. All right. Yes, Ms. Coffey, do you have a question for staff? I think we'll have to do a little musical chairs, but don't go away. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Carlson.
I have many, but I will try to be respectful of our time and our colleagues. I, you know, I would love to talk a little bit about the Alexandria plan and kind of how, how long did that take? And, you know, whether within our community, have we done an assessment or analysis of the root causes of a lot of this mental health issues? I think we all throw around COVID and screen time and things that, you know, are very big picture, but that doesn't really speak to what our children and youth are experiencing. Those are very vague, fluffy kinds of things. And so I would love to know kind of like what we have and have not assessed. And then from the Alexandria experience, you know, how long did it really take to get that kind of comprehensive planning?
I think we need to bring up Daryl and Deborah again.
Yeah.
Please. David, thank you.
So it's not a quick process. And to your point about the data analysis, that was actually the first piece of that work. And every meaningful initiative that we've done really starts with that data analysis, you know? What are the needs? What are the gaps? And then root cause analysis about the problems, just like what you're saying. In Alexandria, we were allocated some funding to hire a consultant. We hired the Forum for Youth Investment, and they came in and provided consultation about how to do the process. And the first piece of it was developing, and we did this, we did this for the Childcare Initiative. We did it for On Marcus Alert as well, like a risk and reach study kind of thing. And then, once we, in terms of root cause analysis, we had a lot of input from the community, lots of focus groups and things like that. And we utilized existing data like the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, et cetera. And once we completed that work, which then was published, we then got working on, you know, big, broad goals. What are the, what are, you know, what does the community see as the top priorities? And then developed underneath that, of course, measurable objectives and action steps. And so it's really kind of, you know, it's like the Childcare Initiative or On Marcus Alert. It's any, any broad-based initiative. And it does take, I think it took us three years to get to the end.
Deborah, can I jump in? Do I need to? Hi, I'm Julie Crawford, and we were in Alexandria together. So during the development of the CUAMP, just to add on from the school perspective, we were critical partners in there and actually goal owners as well, from the rollout to the monthly updates. And I do think Arlington is probably ahead of where we started in Alexandria because we have that data. So the multi-year studies that went into that foundational work, we have a lot of that information through the surveys that we do, whether it's social-emotional learning or the work that we do with our strategic plan that we cross-partner on already. So we have foundational information already, and I think we have structures that would expedite what took us a long time to get going. Thank you.
So we could fast-forward.
Right. I think when we think also about sort of what are we seeing in terms of the current youth mental health challenges, there's no quick answer, and I know that we all want that because then we can fix that quick problem. But really, there's just a variety of factors. I think certainly the pandemic caused a great deal of stress and change, and isolation for many of our students, but also the families. And so, you know, I sometimes see that we have a lot of, you know, family stress. Families are under pressure, you know, in addition to then that, you know, ends up with the students sometimes or the children. I think we also see, if we look at those surveys that Dr. Crawford was just referencing, we see that some of our students, you know, we know that LGBTQ students, you know, some of our minoritized populations of students, you know, have higher, you know, concerns in terms of depression, anxiety, suicide ideation. And I think we have to think about constantly trying to work on creating a positive environment. On the flip side of that, I think we know from this research and what this data from the Virginia Youth Survey, Youth Risk Behavior Survey, tells us, which is that we, as a community, can do some easy things to ensure that students are more resilient, have more trusted people that they can work with. You know, so that's where we get into this idea of the trusted adults. Like, that is a resiliency factor that research shows lowers the risk of potential behavior concerns. We have community connections. So doing some of that work that you were just referencing, where students are engaged with their community, giving back to the community, also helps to build resilience. So I know that some of the work that we're thinking about with some of this extra after-school programming is really hoping to build some of those connections for our students to help, again, build them so that they're more resilient, you know, as all of the challenges that come at them that they face, you know, you know, that they're going to face within their days.
Thank you. I think some of our colleagues actually, I know it's Friday and people think they're just going to go home and have to, some of them actually have more events to go because work never stops. So I think I'm going to just cut us off, if that's all right.
I will follow up with more questions.
You will. No, no, no. So what I was going to say is we have a leadership meeting every month, and I think we will be talking about how we follow up on summer meetings, work sessions, whatever we want to do. Maybe we get a couple of small committees with a couple of board members working two-by-twos on some things. There's a lot to do here. I'm really glad we had this meeting. I think there's some really good discussions, and most of it is leading to like, we need to do more. And I'm glad we're leaving wanting to do more and not saying, thank God, we don't have to see them for another year. This is good. This is good. So thank you all so very much. I hope everybody has a good weekend. We're going to be back here April 2nd. We've got a work session on our budget, and then we've got a public hearing on the budget. Anybody wants to come back again? We'll do it. We've got spring break coming. Anything I'm missing to say or handle?
I just have six or seven, no.
That's all right.
Just thank you.
Mr. DeFranti, I do.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming here, and we're going to continue to work together. Our community needs us to do that, and I'm really glad we're getting a start here. Thank you so much. And thank you all to the staff, doing lots and lots of hard work behind the scenes. Thank you. Word, John. You leave it right there.